Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 22 work session of the Charles County Board of Education. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Schwartz, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have three speakers this evening. I will read the rules for public forum. Speakers should identify themselves. Statements should be brief, to the point, and limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond during the forum to statements debated by speakers. When appropriate, CCPS staff may address the speaker's concerns directly. Statements should relate to Charles County Board of Education, agenda items, or any education-related topic with the following limitations. Personal matters pending potential appeals, or the comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff, or the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language and decorum are required at all times. Our first speaker this evening is Abhishet Mann.
Kamara, to the podium.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you? Long time no see. My name's Abhijit Singh-Mand. I'm a student at North Point High School, and today I wanted to come up here and address my issues that I see with the school dress code. To begin with, the dress code is more of a distraction than the actual point it's trying to bring across. The whole point of the dress code is to stop disruption to the learning environment, and the dress code is actually doing the complete opposite by sending students to the office to change, when in reality, they could be spending that time in class learning. Not only that, the dress code is way too lengthy for what it should be. I shouldn't be worried about how much skin I'm showing on my knees to be able to learn. Not only that, this makes it difficult for students and teachers to keep track of what is and is not appropriate for the school learning environment. So.
All right. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Nayakala Mashago.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
I'm Nayakala Mashago, an eighth grade student at Matthew Hansen Middle. As a girl in my school, it can be difficult for me to find suitable, yet trendy, things to wear. I have to ensure that I'm covered up to not distract anyone. Charles County's dress code is excessive, specifically toward feminine or female-presenting people. So today, I'm testifying to change the dress code. I asked students today at my school, both boys and girls, about the dress code's regulations, and many were frustrated with the rules. A main point that my peers have expressed is the intense level of inconsistency that in the code. In my school, girls with bigger or thicker features are heavily targeted for violations by teachers, staff, and administration. Meanwhile, skinnier girls can get away with wearing pretty much anything, which is very unfair. Along with this, mainly everything in the dress code targets feminine clothing, which means that it focuses mainly on women. I've seen many boys in my school sagging their pants, which is a violation of the dress code, or taking off their shirts, which is a bigger violation of the dress code, and still get no reprobations. Yet, if a girl is wearing yoga pants and a shirt that doesn't go past their fingertips, they could get ISI for a day, counting against their school record. The school dress code should be changed to be more flexible with current fashion trends among students, and should be more leisurely. Clothes are a form of expression, and CCPS shouldn't be hindering greatly on meaningless clothing choices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emeline Agapdassan. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Emily Nagumason. I currently go to Matthew Hansen Middle School, and I'll be speaking on the dress code. All right. As years go by and modern technologies come to life, society has no choice but to adapt and change with it. The dress code and its leancy, however, has yet to follow this pattern. The dress code may not follow current societal standards, but it does favor ones of the past. For the longest, women have been shamed and prohibited from showing parts of their bodies, provocative or not. I've noticed how several of the rules stated in the code of conduct are targeted towards women or feminine-presenting people. They're observed and watched over more closely when it comes to dressing and what they wear. Clothing is a form of self-expression, but why is that expression limited one in a space where students should be able to feel comfortable in what they wear and feel free to be themselves? I've also noticed inconsistencies in the enforcement of the dress code and its unfairness. Girls who may be more developed than their peers, especially at a young age, are more likely to be a victim to this unfair standard. They shouldn't feel ashamed of themselves or their bodies over something they cannot control. It's often I see girls wearing similar outfits, and only one of them being unfairly disciplined because of the way their body looks. Alongside that, clothing most often worn by girls or feminine-presenting people are also prohibited or regulated heavily. For example, tank tops, specifically spaghetti straps, shirts that come off the shoulder, leggings, crop tops, strapless shirts, skirts, and shorts. And even while following the regulations behind these clothing items, girls are still accused of violating the school dress code. This is a big issue within our school's dress code policy, and it's targeting young girls. To add on, when it comes to the inability of wearing hats and scarves in the school, safety and respect are often what's being taken into account. While people may say that you're smuggling drugs or unsafe items in these hats or in these items, while it's almost every day I'm hearing about someone smuggling in vapes, drugs, or any other unsafe item without hats. It's also seen that it's disrespectful to wear hats and scarves inside buildings, while in many other cultures, wearing hats and scarves are a regular thing inside of, you know, homes or in important places. And I think we need to take into consideration other people's cultural lives and their background and ethnic backgrounds, because there are women and men out there who wear hijabs, there's people who have cultural reasons behind their hats and scarves, and they don't want to feel singled out, because it can really put anxiety and pressure on the kids. So I think it's a very big issue in our county when it comes to the school dress code. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was the last speaker.
Thanks, Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Lowndes and others?
Good evening. Chairperson Lucas, Vice Chairperson Morley, and board members, and Superintendent Dr. Navarro. Thank you for having us tonight. Tonight, we are going to present an update on the family life and human sexuality section of our health curriculum. Now, we're not going to be asking you to vote on any material, because the current material that we already offer within our health curriculum has these sections already in it. We just have not been teaching those sections currently. And so we won't need any new material or any new instructional background material to go ahead and present the topics that we're presenting tonight. We had a committee, a family life committee, come together to look at the topics that we have to introduce within our health curriculums. The state changed the framework in 2020, and Comar actually put things in place that require us to teach some specific things around family life and human sexuality when we teach the topic in our high schools. So tonight, we are going to update the board on these topics and how we plan on addressing. We have some recommendations from the committee that we would like to share with the board tonight, and then we would like to get your input as far as feedback on what the recommendations are and how to proceed to go forward. Chairperson Lucas, do you look like you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Not now. I'm sure we all do.
First, I'd like to introduce Mac Galanca. He was the chairperson. He is the instructional specialist for health and physical education for Charles County Public Schools. And then Allison Chaney, she was the vice chairperson for the committee, but she also teaches health and physical education at the Gwen Center. So if you look at the Family Life Advisory Committee, what you'll see is we reached out to a broad group of folks. We have parents on it, we have students on it, we have community members on it, and we had a diverse viewpoint as to how we should approach this topic. I will say, we had some great, healthy discussions on what Comar requires and how we should address it as a school system representing our families and our communities within Charles County. I'm pleased to say that, you know, at the end, we all came to a resolution as to what the recommendations are going forward. And so when you see the recommendations tonight, I do want you to know that everyone that was at that last meeting agreed upon providing the recommendations tonight to the board. Unfortunately, many of our members were not able to make it here tonight, but we do have a few members that I would like to call out. We have Dan Perato, who is the committee secretary. We have Sylvia Royster, who's the Director of Community Engagement here in the county, and we have Madeline Soffer, who is a student. And I really would love to highlight Madeline's. She came to every single one of the committee meetings, and she had great input throughout and always gave us a student perspective. You know, sometimes we were maybe go a little bit on the conservative side as to the topic and how it should be addressed, and Madeline made sure that we understood that the students need to know the information, and because they're the ones that are going to have to live with it, and they need to know what's good for them in going forward. So I would love to thank Madeline and her input throughout the whole time. And at this time, I'm going to really turn it over to Matt Galanca and talk a little bit about the committee and the work that was done. And like I said, you know, what we're showing you tonight will align with the state framework on the family life portion of the health curriculum, and it is deemed that all school systems need to teach this topic, but in Comar, so.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lowndes. Good evening again. My name is Mac Galanca. I'm the content specialist for health and physical education here in Charles County. And again, we're meeting today due to the updates to the health education state framework that rolled out in 2020. Prior to the 2020 update, the framework as it existed was published in 2009 and was referred to as the voluntary state curriculum. So between 2009, 2020, quite a bit of adjustment was made to the health education state framework, which required an update by the state of Maryland, which was approved by the state of Maryland in 2020. The 2020 update was developed in relation with subject matter experts, school leaders, certified health education teachers, and students, and the framework committee that updated the 2020, updated us to the 2020 state framework, used the CDC's Health Education Curriculum Analysis Tool, and then data from the Maryland Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The Maryland State Framework includes several specific instructional topics, some of those which include the teaching of consent, of sexual abuse, and sexual assault. The terms used in the state framework are not intended to be student-facing or to be used in classroom instruction unless they have been deemed age-appropriate. And the framework itself is not instructional material, but it is a working document used by school systems to develop their own curriculum. Again, as required by Comar, our health education curriculum is to align to the health education framework, and content, lessons are intended to connect topics to skills and create an inclusive, positive learning environment for all students with the goal of reducing bullying, discrimination, and harassment. Oh, I'm so sorry. Because of the 2020 update to the health education state framework, that required our alignment. Sorry, we're on slide number five, Mr. Lowndes.
Five.
Yes. Again, due to the update of the state framework, we were required to update all of our content across all units of instruction, which required us to reestablish the Family Life Advisory Committee with the goal of reviewing and making recommendations specific to the health education content of family life and human sexuality instruction. Many of the current, as Mr. Lowndes said earlier, many of the current resources and materials that have been in use continued to be in use during these updates. And per Comar, Maryland Family Life and Human Sexuality Instruction is to represent all students regardless of age, or I'm sorry, regardless of ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Parents and guardians continue to have the right to opt their students out of family life and human sexuality instruction. The direct instruction of those indicators begin in Charles County in fifth grade. In K through four instruction, lessons are typically part of, instruction's typically part of lessons on bullying, uniqueness, and respect. Historically, our parents have opted out students beginning in fifth grade, because these are the lessons that typically begin to teach standalone units of instruction. Our fifth grade instruction is specific to puberty education, and then our content progresses from there as students progress to middle school. The opt-out policies are that, so the content is presented upfront to parents and guardians prior to instruction taking place, which includes the circulation of an opt-out form that goes home. If parents choose to opt out their students, the form is returned, signed. If the form is not returned, signed, those students participate in that instruction. After reviewing all of our content from K through 12, or K through 11, that's intended for use for health education specifically to family life and human sexuality instruction, the following materials, or the following recommendations have been made by the Family Life and Human Sexuality Advisory Committee. Those include establishing additional professional developments for all teachers responsible for implementing the curriculum, and to provide informational session opportunities for parents and guardians to become better informed of instructional content delivered at each grade level per the outcomes of the state framework. Regarding recommendations for providing teachers with training, the committee also recommended taking advantage of what's known as the WISE grant that was extended to Charles County Public Schools by an organization titled the Advocates for Youth. They are a non-for-profit funded by the CDC, and their goal is to support school districts by providing technical assistance and capacity building related to sexual health education. And they would work directly with Charles County Public Schools and our teachers over the course of two years to help create a sex ed program that not only meets our local needs, but provides the school district with a sustainability plan to dress policy and practice, as well, again, as staff development. This extent of work is to no cost to Charles County Public Schools, and the WISE grant provides all necessary supports to sustain sex education over time, including opportunities for teachers, again, to receive training, and to help teachers gain confidence and competence, as well as parent guardian workshops to help increase familiarity of the content with our parents and guardians in the district. At the elementary level, just to clarify, elementary health education is instructed as a singular lesson monthly, with each month as a themed instructional lesson. Our family life and human sexuality content is typically delivered during the month of February or March, depending on the grade level. Our current K through four instruction, again, is focused on respect for boundaries, healthy relationships, consent in identifying trusted adults. It's not until fifth grade where instruction is focused on changes that take place during puberty. Our current instruction is centered around the 2011 Great Body Shop and the 2012 Always-Changing Puberty Education Resource, which is an open-source educational resource that teaches confidence-building skills and educates students about the changes they'll go through during puberty. The committee does recommend updating elementary lessons so that they're most current, or aligned with the most current updated state framework and with Comar, and encourages uniformity across the instructional resources using the same type of instructional resources that we use at the secondary level. We do own that. We just have yet to have the time to align using those resources.
And just to give an update on how these recommendations were given. So we met in between, from October to April, and we looked at all the curriculum. So we started out with the elementary curriculum, and we showed, you know, what was being taught throughout the grades, and everyone had an opportunity to look at the curriculum and actually interact with the curriculum, and then discuss what was being taught, how it was being taught, and then give recommendations on that. So we did elementary, we did middle, and then we did high school.
Yep, thank you. And again, the direct teaching of the family life, human sexuality objectives per Comar are to begin in or before in fifth grade. We choose, Charles County chooses to do that at fifth grade, starting with the puberty educational lessons. As we progress students to middle school, students in middle school receive more in-depth instruction. That instruction's delivered as one unit during the quarter of health education that's delivered each year, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. During that instruction, students are, just as they are in elementary school, permitted to opt out of family life and human sexuality. This continues to be the standard for Charles County Public Schools. Again, students, or I'm sorry, parents and guardians are informed at the beginning of the school year during teacher, or I'm sorry, during, pardon?
Back to school night.
Yes, back to school night. I'm so sorry. And then they're informed again as the course syllabus is circulated at home, and then the third time prior to the unit of instruction, when the opt-out form is circulated again to home. Many teachers are utilizing paper forms and are also circulating opt-out through synergy. Again, family life and human sexuality is one of several topics of instruction in the quarterly health education course, and again, all of those lessons are intended to align to the full breadth of the state framework. That includes the content skills centered on healthy relationships and consent, gender identity, sexual orientation, sexual harassment and bullying, reproductive systems, and menstruation, contraceptives, HIV and STI prevention, and the impact that media and technology can have on relationships. Students learn just the information appropriate for each grade level, and each grade level's content's layered, so students progress to the next grade level to prepare them to make healthy decisions in the future. The content comes from, again, pre-existing CTPS resources, and lessons indicated on the middle school, Family Life, Human Sexuality Instructional Guide are scripted for teacher use, which are useful for teachers to familiarize themselves with clear instructions aligning to the state framework outcomes, and helpful towards explaining sensitive, complex concepts during the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade lessons. The scripted lessons are derived from our Health Smart Resource, which is the most recent resource that was brought into Charles County Public Schools just prior to our COVID shutdown, and it's a skills-based health education program designed to align to state and local policies and frameworks. Specifically with the eighth grade curriculum, there's a combination of existing resources to include Health Smarts, and then because Health Smarts doesn't allow us to reach on the full outcomes of the state framework, we do rely on our 2014 Teen Health Resource that many of our middle school teachers are also familiar with. Additionally, resources include our 2016 edition of Unequal Partners, which has lesson plans that provides instruction specific to power, consent, and healthy relationships, and then what we refer to as the three Rs curriculum, rights, respect, responsibility, which is an open-source sexuality program that follows national sexuality education standards. After review of all the lessons at the middle school level, the committee recommends to continue to use the materials that align to instruction of the updated state framework, and further recommends that as teachers are delivering these lessons, that they evaluate the lessons prior to delivery to determine appropriate tone, length, and perspective for their individualized students at their individualized schools. The committee also recommends that we, that additional resources are evaluated for use to include more videos, relatable, authentic images, and other engaging, inclusive content that represents today's student population.
Before we go on, I might want to take questions on elementary and middle school, because I think, you know, with the elementary and middle school, I think folks, they saw the curriculum, they saw what was being taught, and there's actually, you know, very few questions about the content. Most of the questions was about how do we get more consistency with our teachers teaching the material, and it was more about providing professional development for our teachers, and also, some people were, when they saw the material, they just felt like we needed to present and share the material with our parents and our communities so that they, people had a better understanding of what this content was in the elementary and middle level. But at this time, we can take questions, because it's really the high school where some of the questions were, came to the committee, and where we had some really healthy discussion.
Sure. Appreciate that. Ms. Butler-Washington.
Thank you for this information. This is great. I have two questions. Can a teacher deviate from the health curriculum, and if so, in what way?
When we're deviating away from the scripted lessons, as long as the lesson stays within the confines of the outcomes of the state framework, obviously, we want our teachers to be able to look at the lesson content and then make it their own, and not have to read it word by word, script by script, because that won't be the most engaging for our students. If they do deviate from that script, then yes, it needs to be within the confines still of the state framework and the outcomes of the state framework, which all of our lessons are aligned to be indicated as so.
So when they deviate from it, is they are committed to look at it, to make sure it's still within the curriculum that was intended for the student to learn from?
When they're deviating it, the terms of deviation that I'm speaking of is to make the content their own, so it's most relatable, not necessarily deviating away from the content of the lesson in and of itself.
So one of the things we did talk about as far as deviation was teachers putting their own belief system into the curriculum, and we talked about, you know, you've got to stay true to Comar and to the standard that we're teaching, and that making sure that we're providing factual information for our students.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. That wasn't good. And the last one is, what is taught to the students who opt out in the middle school?
Perfect. So when a student opts out, obviously, they are taking instruction at an alternate location, and that instruction is tied to previous content that was taught in the curriculum in prior unit. So at the middle school level, all of that content is based on healthy relationships, and it's pre-assigned through one of our curricular resources entitled Everfy. It's a learning module that's several modules long, or learning program that's several modules long, that are specific on healthy relationships.
Thank you.
Ms. Morley?
Thank you all for this. My daughter Gabrielle also served on the committee, so I appreciate the discussion and research that went into this. Along the terms of opting out, are parents able to opt out for specific sections? Are they given like a day-to-day, for example, lesson plan, and if there's a certain portion they object to, they can just opt out of that? Are they able to opt out entirely? And if so, like they just don't want any of this taught? What then, would the student not really have a health curriculum, per se? Or what would that look like? Or is that, to your point, it would just revert back to what it was before?
So opting So, opting out is specific for the Family Life and Human Sexuality Unit of Instruction, which is on average, seven lessons long.
Okay.
The opting out for Charles County Public Schools is all or none. We had a lengthy discussion regarding this. And it was determined that to, à la carte, opt out would be too demanding, not just on the teacher, but also on the student. If a student was seen coming and going, especially during the course of that instructional unit, it might single that student out. And we want to prevent any type of activity like that happening with their peers. Now, again, when a student does opt out at all three grade levels in middle school, they are involved in that series of learning modules centered on healthy relationships. I'm, I'm sorry, I forget the remainder of your question.
I might have forgotten it too. Well, what is, is, does opting out look different at the elementary level? Or do you just have?
It's very similar at the elementary level as well. The form goes home. The parent guardian, if they choose to opt out, completes the form and returns the form to their teacher, to their school. And then students are very similar, assign learning modules, not in the same program as middle school, but in an age-appropriate program that contains learning modules as well on healthy relationships. That's what we continue to defer to across the K through eight levels is that push on building healthy relationships.
Okay, so the learning modules, are they then, I guess, removed from the class? And, you know.
Students, students are completing those at an alternate location, yes.
Okay. And do the parents have to return the form, either opting in or out? Or you assume to be in if you don't opt out?
There's no opting in in the state of Maryland per COMAR. It's opt-out only. So, if the form is not completed and returned, they are assumed that they are okay with attending the course and receiving the content.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Smith, Mr. Hancock, and then Ms. Warren.
So, I want to thank the committee for their, their work. This is definitely an important topic. Specifically, I'd like to thank student member Madeline for her work of intending every single session, making sure a student's voice was heard. I think this is definitely an area, and appreciate the push, that this is what students need to know in order to be successful later in life. I, I appreciate my colleagues sort of speaking about the opt-out. And I'm also going to ask a question about opt-out. But hopefully, this is something that families see the importance in and that their children are allowed to attend these classes. I think to Madeline's point, this is very much important and necessarily, necessary, excuse me, for their future development. In terms of the opt-out, just wanting to be clear, how are we going to communicate to families in advance of this particular section of the lesson plan being taught? Just to give families appropriate time to decide whether or not they'd like to, you know, their students to remain in class or be pulled out for that section?
So, one of the things that, and that was brought up, like, how are we going to specifically be clear? So, one of the things that we talked about was providing professional development for our teachers and letting them know, like, not only do we have to give them the option to opt out, but we have to give them the material ahead of time so they can look at it to make an informed decision on whether to opt out or not. And so, we will be telling our teachers that they're going to have to host some type of night with families to let them know what the curriculum is and then give them the, the material on how to opt out.
Let me jump in because Ms. Smith asked about opting out specific sections. And, and you said, you're in, you're in or you're not in?
Just for the family life. They weren't, they're not opting out of the whole health curriculum. They're just the sections that have been identified by COMAR as addressing family life that they've given us permission to have parents opt out of.
Okay. And then, and is that, so my question is, I get that. Does that have to happen before you start the whole, let's just say, set of classes? Or, to Ms. Smith's point, when you get to that point, can you say, no, I'm going, I don't want my child in that class? I think, because I think that's important.
So, we did talk about that in the committee and how we are going to approach that. And, you know, one of the things that we're going to have to do is get together with some health teachers to come up with. Because it really is, like you're saying, it should be closer to the time that you're going to teach the material to let them know what's coming up and what the material is going to look like and give them that option at that point. But I think that we're going to have to get some teachers together to really determine when's the best time for them to, to give the information to the, the parents.
So, Kevin, can I just interject?
Sure.
Mr. Lucas, you have a teacher sitting next to you.
Yes.
And, and I just want to, you know, I think part of it is, just as a reminder, how many units do we have in the health curriculum? I don't know if, if Matt or Allison have memorized them. But there's at least six units, I mean, six strands in the health curriculum, I remember from reading it. And the, the one we're talking about is one strand. So, an entire course has six to seven strands that we're teaching about. And then we're talking about opting out of one of the strands, which is about how many weeks of instruction a year in middle school?
I heard seven lessons. That's what I heard.
Seven lessons or so. So, I just wanted to give Allison, from the logistics as of a teacher perspective, you've taught this, you've dealt with families' comfort levels.
Correct.
When we're thinking about, when you're thinking about what you would think about for communicating and the timing of it, can you talk a little bit about how you and your peers approached it?
Absolutely. Sure. So, as it states, I'm at the FBGUN Center now. But previously, I did 14 years at North Point where I primarily taught health and physical education there. So, a lot of my background is how kind of I did things at the secondary level and has been transitioning that into my experience now while working, where I've been delivering the middle school health education at the GUN Center. So, as far as, from the secondary level, my syllabus outlined as far as what our units were and gave kind of an approximation of where in the course structure those units would come across. It kind of gave a brief overview. And then it was something so very transparent from the beginning for parents that they got that information. And then when we had our open house back to school night, it gave parents another opportunity that came in then if they had specific questions. And I always, keeping that open line of communications with the families is really, really critical. However, keep in mind, if we're specifically talking about at the elementary level, the health education lessons are being delivered by the classroom teacher. And so, that's why, like Matt mentioned at the beginning, the WISE grant giving that opportunity for students that aren't as highly trained, specifically in health education, the opportunity to be getting this training and these practical experiences. The woman who we work with, her name is Nora Galprin. I've gone through a lot of her trainings. There's online simulations as far as classrooms, kind of testy questions that you could potentially get from students. So, there's a plethora of resources that are there for veteran teachers who are experienced and teachers who are like, okay, you're throwing these lessons at me that maybe I feel uncomfortable about to begin with teaching health, but when it comes to those more touchy subjects that I maybe, or those are the ones that I'm like, oh, what else can I slide in here? So, that they can feel as comfortable as possible and as confident to follow the curriculum and sticking within the guidelines that COMAR presents and that is provided with Charles County Public Schools as well. So, following up with that, generally speaking, I would give my parents at the elementary school level, like Matt mentioned, February, March. So, usually about a month before I was teaching it, I would send out communication to my parents as well. Once again, specifically outlining what was going to be covered because some of the parents, it was just a matter of having a conversation to kind of just say, like, this is actually what it is. Because obviously, there's other times, we build things up in our heads of what we think these topics of conversation potentially may be. And so, some parents that definitely kind of talked them down and being like, okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with my student being here. And just having that transparency, once again, of showing them or if it was a matter of them wanting to see some of, a sample lesson or resources that the students would be seeing. So, that's the really big thing that we need to make sure is keeping that transparency and open line of communication with our family. And with the use of synergy and our parents hopefully using that and keeping up with that, it was also something that I would put up reminders on there. So, once again, keeping up those open lines of communication with the parents so that it's not something that their students coming home saying like, hey, this is on Wednesday and today is like Tuesday. And you're like, I don't know anything about this. And so, we're not making a decision kind of haphazardly in that parents can have the opportunity to have those open conversations with their families and what they want their student to be learning. But also, so that they can be a supporter of us as well. And that's the biggest thing that we're looking for is for our parents to be supporting us as educators in the classroom and that we're not looking to create some type of division between us.
Circling back to what Allison was speaking about with the elementary opting out, working with many of our elementary schools the last two years in delivery, especially the fifth grade puberty lesson. I, I have experienced that many of our elementary schools are very good at communicating that the lesson is going to take place and that the parent guardian does have the opportunity to opt out. And goes as far as the extent of many schools, taking the lessons, putting them into a binder and allowing parents and guardians to access that binder in the main office to preview what the content of that lesson is. Now, one thing I didn't mention earlier, per the recommendations of the Committee for Elementary Education, is the delivery of that fifth grade puberty lesson. And again, the fifth grade puberty lesson, fifth grade in and of itself. But that lesson specifically is where we start delivering the family life and human sexuality content per the state framework before that. Again, the K through four content is, again, on healthy relationships, unsafe touch, and so on and so forth. But when we get to the fifth grade instruction of the puberty lesson, traditionally, and what I've been called to do as well, is that schools are dividing their fifth grade class into a, either a male group or a female group, and either of those groups are receiving puberty instruction specific to that gender. As we discussed this as a committee, we came to the agreement that continuing to divide students by gender could potentially result in a Title IX violation, especially if those students are receiving male-only or female-only instruction. And the committee does recommend that we have cogender instruction taking place where both genders are receiving the same exact instruction moving forward. A few of the different ways to deliver this instruction that we discussed is potentially, and it goes back to having our teachers trained even further on the delivery of this content, is that the classroom teachers who deliver all of the other health education lessons also deliver the puberty instruction direct to their class because they've already, at that point of the year, have developed those relationships with their students. Otherwise, experiencing this myself of having almost up to 50 boys in a classroom teaching about puberty and the way the body develops is not an effective means of instructing this lesson. And also, keep in mind that in a short few months, those students then promote off to middle school where they are receiving cogender instruction anyway in, in their health classroom. So, it would make most sense to start bringing things and aligning them to the successful instruction of that content that frontloads what students would then be learning at the middle school level.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I, I'm just trying to get my head around a lot of different things right now. But this is a, it's a tough subject, you know. And, and, you know, one thing that I hear a lot from community members is, this is a subject, and I know this comes down from the state. This is not something drafted in Charles County. This is something that we have to make work. But to so many people, myself included, this is an issue that needs to be discussed at home and stay out of the classroom. I really wish the state would have put this much effort into addressing the amount of drug use and vaping that goes on in the schools, which happens every day inside a school, which is a, a direct correlation to health. I really wish they would have focused more so on that. But that's neither here nor there. When we talk about opting out and talking about an alternate setting, what would an alternate setting look like to learn the curriculum that would, I guess, is being taught this year since, what would that look like?
Sure. In many instances, since we're moving to an online-based learning module, then alternate instructional location could simply be the school's media library resource center.
Okay. My fear is that, and it's just the world we live in now, that isolating students that choose to opt out might be singled out amongst their peers. Do we have any idea what we're going to do to be able to make sure that that doesn't happen with the students that opt out of this curriculum? To protect them from being bullied and targeted for opting out?
So, and I guess just to, to clarify, so are you looking as far as the student coming to class and then leaving class when instruction starts?
Correct. If they, if they're in the classroom and then they opt out and then they're in an alternate setting, they're no longer in that class, the students are going to know why. They're, they're going to pick up on that pretty quick.
From my teaching experience with that, as far as this, I've had very few students over the years who, families have chosen for them to opt out. And I've, once again, keeping that open line of communication between the student, the parent, and myself. So, it's not something that the parent isn't knowing where their student is going for an alternative location. And so, what I had done previously with my stu, my most recent student that I had, they went to the media center. When they got there, they just sent me a quick email to let me know that they were in fact present for school that day. And so, they, we had already preset and we had had a meeting during our NEST flight time that we had had at school where she and I were able to have a private conversation about what the expectations were. So, there wasn't any of that kind of, they're there and then they're removed from class. And I, as an educator, have not had any pushback of any students really being very concerned about why isn't so-and-so here or things like that. I have not, like I said firsthand, had any parent bring me up saying, you know, that their student is getting negative feedback or comments or something like that from their student not being present in class. So, thankfully, I've been very fortunate in the 14 years that I was doing it at the secondary that there was never a concern as far as a student being in an alternative location during those lessons.
Thank you.
And the goal again from the WISE grant is to provide teachers with training so that they are following through on procedures like Allison described.
Thank you.
Ms. Warren.
Yes, I'm trying to keep my cool because, you know, this is one of my favorite subjects. So, but thank you so much for this information. Ms. Butler-Washington had touched on a topic of basically keeping the fidelity of the curriculum. So, I wanted to know, when we spoke of modifications, will you use another word? Would that include, like, say if a teacher's uncomfortable teaching, like, a lesson, could they modify it with like a video instead? Like, say you have a script, you know, and are they made aware? Are there some pre-made modifications that are already added to the curriculum that you all selected? So, if they're uncomfortable, they can modify it?
The, the, the lessons that are scripted from our curricular resources do have a variety of differentiations for the instructor if they are uncomfortable with teaching it in a particular manner. Now, our committee has not reviewed any videos at this point. So, to open-ended allow a teacher to select a video would not be in our best benefit. It would be something that I would like to pre-select ahead of time and at a future date have our committee review and make recommendations before having it even put into the curriculum. So, one of our recommendations was to look at additional resources such as that to include in future dates. So, so those, those are options, but they're not options currently on the table. Because although we're allowing teachers the flexibility to make the lesson their own, we still want the lesson to be delivered so it's within the confines of the outcome from the state framework as it was selected to be. And then that way, we can ensure that there, there is fidelity in that instruction.
Right, because that's important. My second question, I have like three questions. You mentioned with, as far as middle school, one of the things, I was, I had the privilege of doing some research on sexual health education. It was something I selected to do. And I was just reading about some of the issues that teachers were having on the timing of that unit. Now, I taught it over a decade ago. But have you all considered the timing so that the teachers have enough time, specifically in middle school? Because with elementary, they have their teachers, so they'll, they'll be building relationship all along. But in middle school, if we start in August, like, okay, we're talking about family life, you know, sexuality, that's going to be a little weird, you know, for the kids. Like, oh my God, you know. So, to build that relationship and rapport, where is it scheduled to fall in the?
The restructuring of the entire middle, middle school sequence to align to the updated state framework moved the family life, human sexuality instruction from the final lesson of the quarter or from the sequence to the middle of the instructional sequence. So, it's the fourth unit of instruction out of six or seven, I believe it's six, in that sequence at the middle school level.
Yeah.
And we did that for a couple of reasons. Number one, because, yes, we do want the relationships to be built with the students before diving into that content. But also, we don't want to leave it to the very end so that if a teacher ran out of time, that they just skipped over, over or rushed through it without providing all of the, the information that a student would need.
Yes, that's exactly what I read about. And then my last question, I just wanted to know, as far as middle school goes, is, is the schedule going to be like an A-day, B-day schedule? Is it an eight-week semester or is it like every day? Or is that just, it depends on the school?
That really depends on how the, the school is scheduled by the principal and their master's schedule.
Okay. And? And, um, I think, that's it. I think you guys got it covered.
If we could just go down.
Yeah, Ms. Kramer.
Thank you so much for this. I really do appreciate the presentation and, um, all of your expertise. This is just a great deal of information, and I think it's helpful for not only the board, um, members, but for the public to know and understand, um, and be educated about this. So I just have two questions. So one, um, I understand the committee is still meeting, so when are we preparing to implement these changes? Is this gonna be for next school year? Is that still to be determined?
The updated state frame, or updated state framework, the updated scope and sequence for, um, middle school and high school, secondary levels are ready for delivery next school year. The elementary content still requires updating and alignment to the state framework, the updated state framework. So, um, potentially, uh, within the middle of next school year, um, that would be rushing it. Ideally, if we had a full school year to prep that content, it'd be the following year.
Okay, so, planning for potentially 24, 25?
For elementary.
For elementary, correct.
Next year would be middle school and high school.
Okay. And has that been decided already that it's going to be implemented in the fall for middle and high school, or that's still...
Yes, cause we have to offer the Health II curriculum at the high school level next year, and I think, uh, Mr. Galen is gonna talk a little bit about that. Um, and so actually, there has been a group of teachers working on that all this year.
Okay, great. And then just one other question. So in the presentation, um, there was mention a couple of times of committee recommendations for alternate lessons to include a lesson on menstruation if the students are opted out or the parents opt out for the student. Um, so would that just take that portion out of the, I guess, the puberty section? Or would this be something new that would have to be created? And would the parents have to agree to that as well?
The, the menstruation content already exists, so if a student has opted out of the family life instruction, a parent can request, and this is per COMAR, can request that the student receives instruction specific to menstruation. Uh, what we've done is take that instruction that would be delivered to a teacher, and we've more or less, uh, made it into a student readable document with, uh, questions and answers, um, because that student would be completing that in an alternate location, uh, along with any of the other learning modules that are assigned to them. Unfortunately, that content isn't in that electronic formatting in that way.
And so that would be included on the opt-out form, that that was an option?
That is an option on the, on the updated opt-out form, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions. Can you, hold me back up first. So you mentioned, and Mr. Schwartz may have to chime in on this, so, um, so everyone, you say COMAR, so can you, not everyone knows what COMAR means, so. I don't know, Mr. Schwartz, you wanna come up or Mr. Lowndes? Can, can you talk about what COMAR is? Annotated Code of Maryland, Mr. Schwartz may have to come up.
Legal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
COMAR, uh, means Code of Maryland Regulations, or the regulations, uh, in this case adopted by the State Board of Education in Maryland.
Okay, and, but, but COMAR can apply to any state agency, is...
Correct.
Okay, but in this case, so, um, so these regulations are put in place because of the changes that MSD-E singularly made. Is that a true statement?
Correct. Uh, state law requires education in health and sexuality, and the State Board of Education adopted standards to implement that law.
Okay, all right. So to, to Mr. Hancock's point earlier, so every, every county in the state has to implement, maybe implements, but, yeah, implement curriculum to align with the framework that MSD-E has established. Is that a true statement?
Correct.
Okay. And local boards have no authority or control to change that?
Uh, local boards have to meet the state standards. They're given, uh, some flexibility in how to do that, but they still have to meet the state standards.
Okay. All right, thanks. I just wanted to make sure, for, for the public's sake, everybody understands, again, to Mr. Hancock's point and to many people in the public, you know, this is, this is driven by what the Maryland State Department of Education has implemented and is in COMAR, and every LEA slash school system is, is obligated to follow that. Thanks. Um, so can we talk about what, what exactly, okay, and, and the, the people with kids that are, that are younger than mine that have most recently gone through this could, you know, probably already know this, what is, what is proposed to change at the elementary level in terms of, um, the amount, the time of instruction and also specific areas? So, um, you, you, you mentioned that the family life and human sexuality. On the slide, it says to opt out of the K through five family life, but it's really not K through five, it's only fifth grade that the family life and human sexuality. I think that's what I heard you say. I wanna make sure that's true. But can you, can you provide an overview of what's going to be different for an elementary school student? And, and specifically, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. Uh, as of right now, moving into next school year, there are no differences in the content that's being delivered K through four. K through four lessons, uh, continue to be the same. Um, they continue to be driven on, um, healthy relationships, consent, unsafe touch, uh, and fifth grade instruction continues to be the same, specific on puberty education. Because of our model that we deliver one lesson of, uh, each month, with each month being a themed, uh, lesson, um, across the entire state framework, uh, we have very limited time as to what exactly we can teach, so we really, uh, hammer home or, or focus in on the, the best singular lesson that we can deliver, uh, at that classroom level. Um, now, moving forward, as you, as I mentioned, and we're looking to update that content towards the 2020 State Maryland Update, uh, the intended goal to start with is to, um, take the content of our current lessons and find the best exact match, uh, that we can in a scripted content that we have available to us. Uh, and, and then moving forward, a- and this is all under recommendation by the Family Life Advisory Committee, when we get to that point, uh, with Mr. Lowndes as well, is to see where we might be able to have any flexibility to implement further lessons i- if they are integrated with different content areas, uh, across the, the elementary curriculums. Um, again, we don't deliver family life and human sexuality content until fifth grade. Those are standards that we refer to internally as 1C. When you opt out, you opt out of instruction that is titled under that 1C content standard. Um, in some instances, there's content under 1C that might relate to, consent might relate to healthy relationships, but that content also falls under, uh, Safety and Violence Prevention, so students would receive content that's aligned to that standard instead, uh, at that K through four level. And even if a student does opt out of 1C, because that's a separate standard altogether that you cannot opt out of, uh, from K through 12 or K through 11, however we wanna describe it, students will get some level of that instruction when it pertains to consent, healthy relationships, sexual abuse, sexual assault, and so on and so forth.
But I think that to answer Mr. Lucas's question, I think you wanted to know from a parent standpoint, what would be different next year as opposed to this year? And I think for elementary, the big recommendation was to have the, the girls and the boys being taught together in fifth grade when they're going over family life. That, that was the major, I think...
Okay.
Uh, the, the committee was tackling with for the elementary.
Sure, and, and I appreciate that, but let's, let's actually focus on 24, 25, since what I'm hearing is there's not gonna be a whole lot of change, save what you just said, for the upcoming school year.
Correct.
But for the next school year, okay? A- and I think this is where, uh, at least for me, what I hear from people in the public is where, um, there, there's a bit of concern from, from parents. I'm just trying to drill down to understand what's gonna be different at the elementary level. And you mentioned these 1C things, can, is, can you go into any specifics in that and what those deal with? And look, I mean, if, if, if you're uncomfortable, then you understand why parents are uncomfortable.
No, no, I don't think it was a...
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's the, the content, what's the content that's gonna be different from what they're being taught next year? I think that's the question being asked, as to what's gonna be taught in 24, 25.
Exactly. And, and I think for most people, i- it is, it comes down to what people consider topics to be age-appropriate, right? And you can ask 10 different people and get 10 different answers. But, but, you know, when you talk about, you know, seven, eight-year-olds, uh, I mean, it's, it's a much more influential thing, so.
But I think the actual concepts will not change all that much. It's the, it's the materials. I think, uh, what, what was brought up during the, uh, committee meeting for the elementary was when they looked at the materials that are currently being taught, some of the people felt that they were outdated. And so it was really looking at the, the framework and how are we teaching that framework? And can we update the materials that we're presenting to our, our students and offer to our staff as far as, uh, materials being taught and used during the elementary grades?
The, the current lessons, again, were derived from the 2012 curricular resources that we currently own, and we've been using those curricular resources now for, uh, 11 years. Um, somewhere in the middle of that, let's call it 2017, state, uh, COMAR was adopted to include consent, sexual abuse, and, and sexual, uh, assault instruction across all lessons, um, for all grade levels. And so that content was hodgepodgeed into these lessons, um, and the, the committee, as they reviewed the elementary lessons specifically, took note that the lessons were very segmented, uh, and that it was very evident that, that, that these lessons did have abrupt, uh, transitions in content that didn't flow appropriately. So, so going back to the recommendations of, uh, updating our curricular resources, like Mr. Lowndes said, the, the actual content of the lessons wouldn't change per se. Uh, it's just updating now to be, um, have better instructional flow to it, a- and again, align to, uh, the language of the 2020, uh, state, uh, framework. So we're not, we're not introducing any new content at this time, not even for school year 20, uh, 24, 20, 24, 25, 25, yeah, school year 24, 25. Um, and we wouldn't introduce any new content, uh, unless it goes through that recommendation process with the advisory committee either. That's, that's the process as outlined by the state through COMAR.
Okay. And is gender identity part of, in any topics that would be taught in an elementary school setting?
Currently, it's not, but it is included in fifth grade instruction, and I believe it goes, is, down as low as fourth grade.
And is that part of, of the, the family life and health? I mean, if it's in fourth grade, then it wouldn't be part of family life and health, if I understood everything else you said correctly.
It would be part of that unit of instruction, so, so if and when it does become part of our instructional content, cause it currently is not, we only have a singular lesson, that singular lesson doesn't pertain to that content. If it does, that's why we do have the K through four opt-out, uh, available for parents, but we haven't gotten that content to, uh, be integrated into our curriculum currently.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Warren, please.
Real quick, I just wanted to, to speak to this. What, as far as, um, uh, staff goes, as far as health teachers versus physical education teachers, because there is a difference for the public. Um, and I, I did teach health and I had a, I taught PE, and it's totally different, totally two different personalities. People who are physical education teachers are physical education teachers, hardcore, they love phys ed. And people who are health education teachers, they are diehard health education teachers. So what are we doing for, do we have staff that will, I know there's a shortage, obviously, but, um, is that of concern and how will we handle that?
So, one of the things that we're gonna do is make sure that everyone who teaches health has gone through training on how to teach health and gone through a training on the curriculum and how the cur- curriculum should be taught within the classrooms. And I think that was one of the recommendations you saw from the committee to make sure that, you know, our folks are, they understand the curriculum, they understand how to teach the curriculum, and that they're comfortable with the curriculum. I think one thing that, that Matt brought up during the committee is, was that not all of our current folks that are delivering the family life curriculum are comfortable doing so.
Right.
And so that's one of the reasons why that, uh, non, uh, the WISE grant was, uh, going forward was to help train folks in how to teach the, the content.
Yeah, I had, I heard a lot of that. I just wanted to double back and say that for the public, because it's not the same. And, um, that's gonna be very important, because even a seasoned health teacher, they may not feel comfortable. So, um, I can only, you know, think of how a physical education teacher will feel. And I know some teachers, they love to teach and they love their job, so they'll just do it, but it does matter, um, just, you know, that, that preparation, so that's gonna be very critical.
And, and again, at the elementary level, the, the lesson is delivered by the general educator. Um, so the, the requests I've received, uh, now over the last two years from the elementary teachers is for more training, uh, on how to deliver that lesson content, especially the puberty lesson. The, the, uh, one comment that stands out is that, um, yearly you expect us to teach a lesson that we have not had any formalized training on, uh, on delivering. So that, that's where the, uh, the need comes from, and especially taking advantage of the WISE grants to get, uh, as much as of our staff trained so that they do have the, the comfortability and the confidence of delivering the, the content.
Yeah, I thought about them as well, general ed, so yes, thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
Um, when you're training with this health, are they gonna get some kind of certification that you know that they're trained well enough to be able to teach this health?
Uh, unfortunately, the training process doesn't provide a certification, but as all of our training goes through staff development, we do have a running record of the training that our teachers are engaged in.
Okay.
Okay, please, that's all good questions. Thanks, everybody. Now, let's, uh, look forward to...
Sure. Thank, thank you for all the excellent questions. I very much appreciate, I think, having that clarification is necessary. Um, as we now move on to, uh, high school level health education, um, part of the, uh, the updates, uh, to health education from the state of Maryland per COMAR was the inclusion of, uh, a Health II class, or the addition of a half, uh, credit of health education as a graduation requirement. Uh, we're delivering that in the course that we're titling as Health II. Um, that course is required for students who've entered the ninth grade in the 21, 22 school year. So currently, though, they are sophomores, they will be juniors next school year, and then all subsequent, uh, students thereafter receiving, uh, instruction in Health II are being scheduled for that Health II course. Um, that Health II course, uh, is planned to be backed, cause it is a semester-based course, backed by fin- financial literacy on the other semester. Uh, but the Health II course e- expands upon what students are currently learning in Health I, and uses those introductory instruction, instructional lessons from Health I to expand on development of skills, attitudes, and behaviors, uh, to enable students to make decisions, to promote helpful behaviors as they, uh, promote outside of high school. During Health II, students are engaging in inquire, inquiry and problem-solving based approaches to utilize, uh, developmentally appropriate progressions of content related to, uh, our concepts in health education. Uh, and then our instruction is built on students being able to analyze, uh, and you heard me say earlier, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the student, uh, health data, uh, and then to make, um, and then to tie that around real-life experiences so that students can develop, uh, independence and make healthy decisions as they, uh, become young adults. Um, so Mr. Hancock, you mentioned earlier about the, the substance abuse, that's a big topic, um, of data analysis in our, our Youth Behavior Risks Survey. Um, so students would be using information from that to then see that, um, there is a growing population, as you mentioned, of students involved in substance abuse and vaping, especially, um, across the state of Maryland.
Matt, can I just add one thing? When I talk to students and students, we talked in, um, the council that we meet every month, Dr. Jones and I, and the sheriff's office, one of the things that the students said to us is if you give us a real-life problem of practice or how to solve, then we can work on coping, um, skills and mechanisms. And these are not like, simple things, uh, and I love the, the way the Health II concepts were brought up, where it's problem-solving, but it's not as simple as saying, you know, um, Mr. Lucas asked you to take, uh, a drink, should you say yes or no? They're actually complex, real-life problems, and that's what our young people need, examples of those. And that's where they bring multiple discussions. I'm excited to sit through the classes and hear students figuring out how to engage what decisions to make, how to help their peers, how to help themselves through really, uh, li- real-life experiences that they're doing, so they can bring in all this knowledge about all of the, the topics that they've learned about and really make decisions. And I think that Health II course was built that way in a way that... And I think that Health II course was built that way in a way that begins to prepare our young people for after-school. We have to think about the fact that they're going to leave us and into adulthood in a real way. And I'm just very, very proud of the way the, the committee that put it together is thinking about how to create that, that curriculum.
The, the work group did a fantastic job as we pulled from teachers who are currently teaching the, the Health I, as it will be called, course, knowing where students have begun in that process, coming from middle school through that entry-level health course at the high school level, and then knowing based on what they're teaching in the Health I course to how to develop that Health II course to make it more real-life centric. And as Dr. Navarro said, problem-solving based to prepare our students as they promote outside of the school system. Regarding our recommendations for high school from our Family Life Advisory Committee, just like our, our middle school recommendations, the advisory committee does recommend that we use our resources that are available as they've found our resources to be fit for use in our instruction across not only Health I but in Health II. Again, family life and human sexuality is one of several topics of instruction during health education. At the high school level, health education moves on to be a semester-based course, as you heard me mention earlier. So the unit of instruction is a little bit more substantial as students are receiving at middle school. And it's, again, progressive so that students are learning topics that are age-appropriate to them and to prepare them for the next level of health education or for life outside of high school. The one thing that us as a committee, as we were meeting over the last several months, did run into as we were analyzing the content for Health II, was the application of the terminology of intersectionality in one of our lessons after quite a lengthy debate of more than even one session of meeting. The committee has agreed that, that the application of the terminology of intersectionality is not age-appropriate for the high school level at this time. As you heard me mention earlier, the language of the state framework isn't used in instruction unless it is deemed as age-appropriate. And again, that terminology comes directly from the outcomes of the state framework. So one of the lessons that we were looking at, use the term of intersectionality, and after great debate, it was determined that we're going to take that lesson, put it on pause for right now, and then as we reconvene as a committee group and redevelop the lesson, look at the lesson focusing more on disparities of inequality or inequity as moving forward, because the terminology of intersectionality has a lot of theory behind it, as, as some of our committee members were discussing with the committee. And then that concludes our content presentation for high school health education. What other feedback do we have from the group, from the board?
Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful. It's been stated a couple times, but I just want to reiterate, I know it was certainly mentioned on, that there's an opt-out option for the elementary school level. Just so the public can hear it, will there be an opt-out option for middle school and high school as well?
Yes, they have very similar opt-out options.
Excellent. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that there is, some people are under the impression that it was only for the elementary school level. So that, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Ms. Smith?
So intersectionality was mentioned. I'm just curious how the committee was sort of approaching the definition or description of intersectionality.
So, so I could talk a little bit about the discussion that took place. So there was a, a healthy discussion on the politicized definition of intersectionality and how folks have taken it and are either viewing it from politically, from the far-right or from the far-left, and folks brought in examples of both. And when we looked at COMAR, what COMAR was looking at, the, the, the area that it was looking at was the health. Who was receiving health? Who had health available to them? Where is it that we can do to make sure that everyone has health available to them and are able to get and lead a healthy lifestyle and get healthcare? And so in looking at where the discussion on intersectionality left us, it did actually, it took us very far from what that concept of making sure that folks had the proper healthcare available to them and who was it that wasn't right now in our society and how could we make, you know, changes into the laws and things like that to make sure that everyone had healthcare available to them and things like that. It was so far away from where COMAR was in that standard when we were discussing intersectionality that the decision was to really look at how can we come back and address it in a way that would help us meet COMAR.
I appreciate your response. I may have some questions at another presentation.
Yeah.
Ms. Thomas?
During the collaboration, did, you involve the health department with it when you did the health sessions with this, when y'all did this?
The health department was welcome to all of our Family Life Advisory Committee meetings.
Did they join you?
We did not have attendance from the health department.
Ms. Morley?
Just one quick question. Where and how is age-appropriate defined? Is that spelled out in COMAR or is that more a judgment call for the CCPS educators? So we've heard the term a lot, but I just want to understand exactly for the benefit of the public, what does that mean?
There's no definition of age-appropriate in COMAR, so that would be under the determination of CCPS as we're developing our content to meet the outcomes of the state framework.
Can I just clarify that indirectly by, by where the opt-out begins per the, per MSDE, there is a grade level. So grade level opt-out begins in fifth grade, and so that's sort of the way the state ties it to age, if you will. So they said the, the standards that we want to be taught, those begin, there's an opt-out option at fifth grade. So I guess by default, they're saying that age range between, most kids are in fifth grade all the way up to whenever they take Algebra II, Health II. Sorry. No opt-out for Algebra II. There's no opt-out for Algebra II. It's a required graduation.
Ms. Butler-Washington?
Yes. When will the COMAR be completely implemented into our school? The whole, the whole program, whatever they ask, ask for in COMAR, when will it be completely implemented?
We're moving to completely implement COMAR ideally by school year 24, 25, when we get to update our elementary content to align to 2020 state framework.
But next year, the middle school and the high school will be fully implemented?
Correct.
Any other comments? So, um, to, to echo what several board members have said, I, I think, you know, for a lot of parents, we need to make sure that, that we communicate the opt-out policy in, in as many ways possible. And, and I appreciate you putting in the slide there that, that speaks to that. I didn't know, and the, in our audiences, this is the student member that was on the board? Okay. I didn't know, are you a father, by the way? Are you related?
Are we related?
No, no, no. I'm looking at him. Okay. Sorry. All right. I, I was going to ask if you wanted to speak, but I, up, up to your discretion, I appreciate a student input if, if you're, if you're willing to do that.
Hi, I'm Madeline Sofer. I'm a freshman at Wacky High School.
Okay. And how did you, how did you end up on the committee?
My mom had kind of introduced me to it.
Sounds like you're. Sounds like you're voluntold. That's what that sounds like. Okay. Okay. And, and your, your, your experience in the committee was, was good? I mean, you thought there was lots of good discussion?
Yes.
Okay. And, I mean, as a student, are, are you comfortable with, with everything that was discussed and what's proposed to be implemented?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, they all made me feel as though my opinion was valid, so anything that I felt had definitely been implemented.
Okay. All right. Anything else you want to say?
No.
Okay. No? Okay. I just want to give you an opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We're good? All right. Appreciate everyone's healthy discussion and thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Next on the agenda is, is a proposed policy update to 7320. I'm going to ask Mr. Schwartz if he would come up and just briefly go over the proposed changes, and then we can, we can hear from, from Mr. Hancock and, and Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Ms. Hancock and Ms. Smith. Ms. Mackey and myself were on a committee that worked together to develop a draft policy for the board to consider on naming of school facilities. It's actually an amendment to what our current policy says. Our current policy is two lines long. Our new policy is four pages long, so you can see the amount of work that we put into this policy. It deals not just with naming of schools, but also renaming of schools. The name of schools under the policy would be either a geographic feature or a location of Charles County, a name other than a geographic feature or a person's name, or a name of a person. So those are the three types of names that we can choose from as a board. Nothing in the policy requires us to rename schools at all, but if we decided to rename schools, the process is laid out in the policy where the board could decide on its own to rename the school or take in public input into whether a school should or should not be renamed. The policy goes into how that process would play out. A committee would be established by the superintendent to either name a school or to rename a school. If a school's being renamed, the first decision the board would make is whether to rename the school at all, but then the second question after that decision is made to rename the school is what the name would be. And the policy would lay out who would serve on a committee to decide what the recommended name would be. I'm not going to read the policy. You can certainly see this. This is on board docs. The policy also addresses naming portions or partial names of facilities. If we're naming a classroom or school field, for example, the policy covers that as well. This policy is, again, on board docs for the public to review. This is an information item today. We're bringing it forward for the first time. The next time we bring it back to the board will be as a report item for discussion, debate, amendments, changes, and then we will bring it as an action item at a following meeting after that.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Yeah, so as Mr. Schwartz said, as with any, any first-time update or, or new policy, this is an information item, so we're not going to have a lengthy discussion tonight. But Mr. Hancock and Ms. Smith just want to say a few words about the process, and I appreciate, I can see there, there's a five in the title, so that means that's a fifth draft, so you obviously went round and round a few times. Appreciate all the work.
No, certainly. I think I want to definitely give kudos to my co-lead, Mr. Hancock, for his time and dedication to the process. We wanted to ensure that what was put forward was not something that was completely different or divergent from what other school systems who are a little further ahead than us in the renaming policy have proposed. So definitely looked at what our other colleagues across the county of Maryland have done, specifically within Hartford County and Montgomery County, also looking at Washington, DC to see sort of what they've done, as well as Virginia, had a few sort of conversations with colleagues out in Arlington County, as well as looking at Dallas Independent School District to see what they've done, sort of someone outside of the DMV. So this is not something that is far, too far removed from what other school systems have done, but truly reflects kind of the diversity within Charles County and sort of who we represent as a school system. So very excited for the public to have it and to hear public comment on it. So, Mr. Hancock?
Yeah, Jamila really did a, a great job putting a lot of this draft together, and it was a pleasure to work with her to do that. We currently have no renaming policy, so it, it's something that we should certainly have, and it was, took us a couple meetings to put everything together, but I think we got something that we both feel comfortable bringing before the board. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you both. And as I said, we'll, we'll have, you know, ample time to discuss this at a future meeting, but it's out there now, so the public can, can review it and board members as well. So again, appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you both.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. You look like you want to say something, Dr. Navarro? Yeah. So when we, well, as far as when we'll see this again, work with the superintendent, June is, is a pretty packed month with a lot of things we have to do, so it, it may slip past that. But given the importance of it and, and also given the process for what could potentially happen implemented as, as written, we want to make sure we have ample time. So if, if it doesn't appear next month, don't, don't be surprised. It's, that's just one of the, that out there. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Can I just add to that, too? I think the other piece is beyond, so the board does have right now a heavy agenda for the month of June. The other thing I think it's, it's an extremely important community conversation with our families. And so we have a lot, I know we have thousands of followings every month that tune into our board meetings, but we actually go down slightly in June. People are getting ready. The timing, we're going to get out a little early, so people start forgetting about our board meetings and then checking out and, and other things happen, which, you know, we're okay. In August, families are watching again. And so if, if the board is going to discuss this, I also would echo that we want as much of the community to be part of it, and bringing it in August to discuss it amongst yourselves is a way that we get as much of our viewership as possible, since we don't have a July meeting.
Oh, oh. Nice dig. Thank you.
Nobody would be watching it anyways.
Thanks, Dr. Navarro. All right. Ms. Acton, I believe you're up next.
Yes, Ms. Fisher-Davis. We are a team. So good, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Bear with me on this because there's quite a few changes, so I'll go through them and then you can ask any questions that you'd like. So the superintendent is requesting an intercategory budget transfer of 8.5 million in accordance with Education Article 5-105. The request is necessary to support the following. The proposed increase of $125,000 for administration, which will reflect the reallocation of funds for copier paper for the entire system. Under mid-level administration, it will reflect the proper budget placement of funding for the purchase of a CTE food truck. This is, this offset is a transfer of lapsed salaries related to principal and assistant principal salaries. The proposed decrease is $1.274 million. Under instruction, salaries and wages, it will reflect the reallocation of lapsed salaries related to teacher and guidance counselor wages. The proposed decrease is $4.7 million. Instruction, supplies and materials will reflect the proper budget placement of funding for the purchase of textbooks for U.S. history, world languages, and high school language arts. The proposed increase is $891,000. Instruction, other instructional costs will reflect the proper budget placement of funding for increases to the proximity learning teacher contract. The offset is a reallocation of contracted instruction and test scoring services. The proposed increase is $12,975. Special education reflects the reallocation of lapsed salaries related to instructional assistants and speech therapists. The proposed decrease is $1.2 million. Student health services reflects the reallocation of prior-year purchase orders related to nursing services. The proposed decrease is $1.3 million. Student transportation will reflect the purchase of additional school buses for the CCPS fleet. The proposed increase is $1.2 million. Operation of plan- Operation of plant will reflect the proper budget adjustment for increases for temporary and overtime pay for building service workers, additional funding for vehicle fuel, and additional funding for custodial supplies. And lastly, there is an adjustment for technology costs for Posoda network security items. The proposed increase is one point one six seven million. Fixed charges will reflect an increase for higher-than-anticipated healthcare claims. The proposed increase is two point one million. Community service will reflect the proper budget adjustments for increased temporary wages. The proposed increase is twenty thousand. And last but not least, capital outlay will reflect the proposed expansion of the CCPS central office building. The proposed increase is three million. We are asking for approval of these intercategory budget changes, and then this request would go to the county commissioners for their consideration and approval.
So questions, I'm sure, but just let me preface it by saying this is something that we routinely do every year at this time. As Ms. Acton indicated, when we want to move money between those thirteen categories, we just can't do that internally. We have to send it back to the commissioners for approval. And so that's the purpose of Ms. Acton here today, and it makes her life interesting. So Ms. Butler-Washington first, and then Ms. Smith.
Okay, I would like to talk about the recent letter that came in to us from the bus contractors. I would like to emphasize us building a successful partnership with our bus attendants. I want us to think about the safety of our students, the importance of the bus attendant taking our students back and forth to school. The bus attendants must have currently a CDL with bus and passenger endorsement, must have a clean driving record, successfully completed a DOT annual physical and a physical with TD test, and must pass a criminal background check in Maryland and surrounding states. I'm afraid that we will be having a problem finding and retaining qualified bus attendants for the upcoming school year. This is why I moved to direct Dr. Navarro to renegotiate the bus contract to reflect the eight-hours workday for each bus attendant.
Okay, just to be clear, this is for this year's budget, for the FY twenty-three budget, which expires June thirtieth. So.
Well, I'll second that, if that's a move.
That's not a motion we can entertain at this time, because that's not what we're talking about.
Okay, we're talking about moving this budget to the commissioner.
So this is this year's budget?
This is this year's budget.
Thirty-fifth, so at the June meeting is when we would be voting on the final budget for the next fiscal year, which is...
This is, yeah, this is this year's budget.
This is, I want to put it in this year's budget. That's why I put the motion on the floor.
There's, so, so let me try to explain this. We're not asking for an increase of funds. We're using the budget that we've been allotted for this fiscal year. And what Ms. Acton has presented is moving money between categories. She's not requesting additional money.
And what I'm saying is, Mr. Himes provided us the difference between the seven and eighth chart, right? And the difference in pay was one million, seven hundred and three thousand dollars, five thirty-three, twenty-three cents. The total transportation budget is thirty-eight million dollars. If we subtract the additional, which was the eight-hour working day, which one thousand, one million, seven hundred and three dollars and fifty-three cents and twenty-three cents from the transportation budget, it will leave thirty-five million for the use of the transportation budget. So in lieu, I'm asking for the same thing. I'm not asking for you to increase it. I'm asking you to deduct the money from the already-established transportation budget, which is thirty-eight million dollars.
So we cannot affect a change to this year's budget at this juncture. The budget for this year is already established.
But it has not been approved by the board.
Yes, it has.
I thought she said, no.
This is Ms. Butler-Washington. We're talking about this year's budget.
Right.
The F, okay, and this year's budget is already established, and there is six weeks left in this year's budget. So.
Approve and establish is two different things. I'm asking for the same thing as Dr. Navarro just asked for, to move funds around. I'm putting a motion on the floor to ask for the same thing for the bus attendants. I'm not asking for an increase. I'm asking for the thirty-eight million dollars from the transportation budget to be decreased to make sure that they get their eight hours. That's what I'm asking for.
So that is not an appropriate request to make in public. If you're talking about a negotiation, then a negotiation is something that is done in executive session. And to ask, if you like to ask, you can ask for a dollar amount, but to ask for specificity in any sort of contract negotiation is something that is done in executive session. And again, when you say move, you can't just move. If you add to one thing, you need to subtract from the other, because the budget is fixed.
Right, that's what I asked for. Okay, the transportation budget is thirty-eight million dollars. So just like Dr. Navarro asked for the proposed increase of thirty, from the capital outlay for three million dollars to increase it, I'm asking for the bus attendant within the transportation to be increased to one thousand, I mean, one million, seven hundred and three dollars and fifty-three cents and twenty-three cents. That's that, I'm asking for the same thing.
No, you're not. I don't know how to explain, I don't have, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Schwartz, would you like, is there anything that you can add, or, yeah, I know, it's...
Well, I would say that, actually, that's from, so we're talking about, so we're talking about the FY twenty-three budget, and the intercategorical changes have to net zero, right? So they're moving funding around. I think what Ms. Butler-Washington is saying is that, so the question about bus drivers getting paid for eight hours is something that doesn't exist today, and it was proposed for next school year. I am wondering if you're asking for us to have an intercategory change for a million plus to the wages of bus drivers for this year, but at the same time, that has to come from somewhere else in the already-approved budget. And I think that's the problem that we're having.
Plus, that number that has been presented represents a change for an entire year.
Right.
Not the remaining six weeks that we have in this year's budget. It would be, to suggest that dollar amount for six weeks that remains in the FY twenty-three budget doesn't make sense. I understand your point, and you need to bring it up at the next meeting, and you need to be very specific about what it is you're asking, and not just asking for it, but what do you want to take away?
Didn't Mr. Himes give us a chart that specifically tell us what the two amounts mean?
He did.
He gave us a chart.
He did, and that, those numbers have been shared publicly, but those numbers represent an entire year.
So the budget that we're submitting now is for next year, all year, right?
When you, our budget for next fiscal year has already been submitted to the commissioners, and the commissioners, I'll defer to the superintendent.
Yeah, so the commissioners have, last week, I think I sent a message, they approved our, to fully fund our budget officially. We come back in June for the board, now that the board has to get final state number, so that's the local portion, which we already have fully approved. We have a state portion, and we're getting final numbers from the state in early June, and that's why we bring the entire budget, the local and the state numbers, again, formally to the board for final approval at the June board meeting. So if you're asking about the funding for driver wages and attendance, that's next year's budget, and that's why Ms. Acton said that you probably want to talk about that budget in June. Right now, we're talking about the changes of this school year's budget.
Correct.
Okay, so the budget that we're going to approve for next year?
We, the board finalizes that approval at the June board meeting. It's on the agenda as an action item.
Okay. Well, I will bring it back up. I rescind, take it back, and bring it back up in June.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Hancock?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Acton and Ms. Fisher Davis. I just have a question on the decrease because of lapsed salaries from the mid-level administration. Are we that short-staffed? That's a lot of money to come from lapsed salaries. I guess, everybody shaking their head, yes, that's not good.
And we're short-staffed, and remember that we only budget to ninety-nine percent.
I understand, and that's just for mid-level administration. We're that short-staffed, okay? I just wanted to make sure. I know it said lapsed salaries, and I was like, wow, that's a, that's a lot. That's not good, so thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Smith and then Ms. Morley.
So always, thank you for the presentation. Line item number six for special education, the reallocation of lapsed salaries related to instructional assistants and speech therapists. I know that that's a hard fought area to find kind of folks with the proper expertise to be in our schools, so I understand kind of the proposed decrease. I would want to ensure, or at least if you can speak to, how we're going to continue to invest in special education, even though we're moving, removing, not removing, but we're shifting some funding from salaries of staff that weren't realized.
So Dr. Navarro is going to weigh in and talk about the shortage across the state in special educators.
Well, yes, so what I would say specifically is that we didn't lower the number of positions. So when you have salaries that are unused, and then we decide, here's a laundry list of things that we need to do for the system, and then we bring to you the repurposing of those dollars that were unspent to something else that has also been prioritized during the school year that we just haven't gotten enough money to do. We don't remove the number of FTEs.
Oh, right.
And so one of the things we are working on is getting more of the colleges and universities to have interns do their internships with us, because those speech and language pathologists tend to remain in the systems where they do their internship. So we're trying to attract them early so that hopefully they stick around and stay. And we don't want to ever decrease the number of people that we need. We want to fill up. And so we are, and I don't know if Mr. Lowndes wants to add to some of the other additional strategies that we're trying to do. We contract a lot of these services out, because a lot of people want to work as contractual employees rather than school district employees as well, so.
And that's one of the things that I was going to talk about. We did, we have gone to outside companies to do speech-language services online, but in doing that, we've had to then look at how do we provide someone in the school with the students while they receive these services online. So we are looking at adding additional IAs next year to the schools to help service the speech services that we owe our students. It was very difficult this year, just because we weren't able to hire the number that we needed, and then many of the other LEAs around the area were also hiring these outside agencies. So even with the hiring of the outside agencies and everything, we're going to owe services during the summer to help get these students up with the speech services that we owe them.
Yes, that's definitely helpful. Just as a special education advocate, just wanting to ensure that the proposed decrease, the one point two million dollars, as it's being kind of moved into other categories, just ensuring that we're thinking about how those other categories will also support students with different abilities.
Yeah, and let me just, so that, be clear, that in next year's budget, there is not a decrease, just so we're clear.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah.
That clarification is helpful for the public. I think what I'm speaking to is, for this current budget, it's being proposed that we shift one point two million dollars from line item six, because we didn't have enough staff in that particular line item. So what I'm saying is, in terms of shifting it into other categories, just ensuring that whatever those other categories are, that we're also thinking about how those other categories will support students who are differently abled.
I'll let the superintendent respond, but it doesn't, it wouldn't necessarily do that for any category, right? It's just that there was a, you know, you missed the target of what you planned on spending. And again, we're only talking about six weeks of the remainder of this year's budget.
So what I will say, and I think this is what Ms. Smith brings up, is what she's getting at. What I will say is that we collectively, probably this year, by the time we pay our compensatory services and overall staffing, while we may have some salary laps because we don't have enough, we don't have all the special ed positions filled, whether it's speech, language, or special education, I think proportional, we have probably spent more in special ed overall. By the time, once we finish costing this out, and I'll run the numbers, Ms. Smith, I hear what you're saying, is this idea of like, where do the dollars that were meant to go for special education students, where are they going? But I think this is just one, one item. IDA requires us, this is local funding, so IDA requires that we can't use all of the IDA money for other purposes. We have to keep, you know, a certain, we do have a certain flexibility for students who may not be identified as special education. But I, but the serious issue is compensatory services. Because of that staff openings in special ed, the compensatory services, I want to look at this summer's budget and into next year for compensatory services, because I think we will be paying quite a bit for that because of the lapsed salaries. So we can probably look at, once we close this year, Sherri, and we look at, because summer is two budgets, there's the closing of June and then all of July and August, we may run a report and take a look at that and just kind of, I get your point around, really, the concept of the blueprint, does the money follow the student, and that's really what you're asking.
Appreciate it.
And we still own the services, like Dr. Navarro said. So even if we were short this year because we weren't able to hire a speech pathologist, we still owe the services to the students and the families.
Ms. Warren and then Ms. Morley.
Yeah, thank you. To piggyback off of what Ms. Smith was saying, because that was going to be my question, well, not the same question, but can those funds, first of all, let me just back up to this budget question and everything. I think there's definitely a need for some understanding with the last conversation that we just had. So my understanding right now is, what we're talking about, you said, is for the next six weeks of this school year, correct? And we're going to be making decisions for next school year, I guess, in August or in June.
Will you prove the budget for the next school year at our next meeting?
Okay, so that's clear. Thank you for the clarity. So my other question was, with this special ed piece, I was wondering, can those funds be reallocated within special education? Like, I see there's a decrease. How does that, does that make sense? Like, to your point, you wanted to, if it's going to be decreased and dispersed somewhere else, will it still be beneficial, and then, or could it stay within special ed but used in another way, or?
Yeah, so I think, I think the way to think about this is doing the analysis the way I was thinking about all of the sources of funding for special education, and has the per-pupil expenditure for special ed gone down for students as a result of that? If you think about this exercise, it's sort of an accounting exercise. This is local fund, this is mostly local funding, right? But there, or funding that has been already approved by the budget. So if you think about it, it's this idea of every year, we have a list, and actually, if you remember, we, for the FY, for next year's budget, we have a list of things that we have not yet funded. And so, and so what we do is we look at the list of items that we had for this year's budget that we just didn't get to fund, we weren't able to do. So let me give you a great example. The world language textbooks and the US history textbooks that you approved a little bit ago, that funding came up much higher than what we expected it to be, so we had a huge delta to be able to provide the students the fundings. But we have to have books here when they come back in September. So we have the list that is created by everybody, departments and so forth. Some of it is building, some of it is textbooks, some of it is... building, some of it is textbook, some of it is the food truck that we're going to be using for the culinary students. And then we look at where were the fundings, where we said we were going to hire a hundred people, and we were only able to hire ninety of them, or ninety-three of them, and so we had a little bit of lapse. And so, Sherry enjoys immensely coming towards the end of the year and just going down to the nickel and dimes components. This is a lot of money, but it's not a huge amount of money compared to our total budget. Uh, it's a small proportion. And then she begins to say, okay, Dr. Navarro, what do you prioritize out of everything else? We still have a list that we won't get to. And then we begin to say, let's say we have a total of, uh, six million dollars that we have left over from all these different places that had a little bit of monies left over, and then we prioritize, okay, so we need the food truck, we need the books for the kids, we need to expand some space in this building, because we have too many people, and we don't have enough room, so we're going to, um, add some modulars back there, so we can have more, um, spaces, because we can't have families meeting space or anything in this building. So, we start prioritizing those. And that's what you see, some of them fall in the same category of where the money is, but most of the time, it doesn't. And so, we need permission from you, and then we send it to the county, they also need to approve it, to say, yeah, you can change between these categories to take care of these items that you had in your wish list that you didn't get to fund in this year's budget. I hope that helps.
Yes, it's, it's working through, yes. I think, you know, just that, so, the, the end goal by the end of the fiscal year, which is the date, what's the date of the fiscal?
June three.
June three, okay. All right, I'm getting my fiscal dates right. The goal is to have a zero balance.
Exactly.
All right, got it, just work with me, public, thank you. So, all right, uh, okay, that's clear.
Yeah, and, and for, and for any of the areas, when, when you see lapsed salary, I mean, as, as the superintendent just said, we, we didn't, we couldn't hire all the people we wanted, so, and, and so, the, the initial budget for that line item, you know, has an excess in it. And, and so, you know, if we could have provided more services, not just for special education, but for other, these other areas, if we could have provided more, we would have, but we just don't have the, the resources, i.e. people, to do that.
So, are we looking at ways to, um, address that issue? Like, so that there is not, you know, so there's not a big old surplus at the end? Are we looking at the?
Yes, so our goal is, is to staff at ninety-nine percent every time. Um, and you guys are getting some information from me, uh, for my annual evaluation, that will tell you where we are in terms of staffing for teachers and other staff members throughout the district, uh, where we are this year at this point in time compared to last year. And we are, right now, looking much better than last year, but we have a workforce shortage throughout the organization, um, and the, you know, everybody's having sort of workforce shortages, and so, we, we will still continue to, we're in midst of recruitment season and contract offerings, and our goal is to hire at ninety-nine percent, um, so that we don't have as much salary lapse as we, as we, um, had.
Uh, Ms. Creamer? Oh, I'm sorry, I said, I said Ms. Morley.
Go ahead, go to her.
Two quick questions, and thank you, um, for this presentation. Item two regarding the CTE food truck, can you explain where will that be housed, who will be able to use that? Is that, I'm assuming primarily North Point, or, I, I would love to see that equitably used.
Absolutely, so, we do think, um, uh, we're going to have a, a committee come together so that it is not only, um, at North Point for the culinary programs, that we have the ProStar students also having an experience through it. I believe this summer, um, there is, I know Becky mentioned that there was a group of people getting together and thinking through the logistics, how do we schedule this? How do we get information out to the community? How do, um, how do you request to drive it? Because it is a bus, you need a CDL license. So, we have to, we, we have, we cannot move the bus without somebody that has a CDL license driving it, um, and the rotation that it'll have. So, I think there's a, a group of working, I don't think they started yet, because we were still trying to put all the equipment, um, to it, but once we have the bus, um, I would love for it to be driven up here, so that the board members could take a look at it inside, because it's just a, a really neat project to see, or we can go see it when it becomes.
And sample, of course.
And sample, yes, we am, yes, I agree with that, yes.
Thank you, and my second, oh, sorry, Dr. Navarro, will you finish?
No, I was just going to say, see it in action.
Yes. And my second question, um, item, around item twelve, which Dr. Navarro answered, um, is, you know, three million sounds like a lot for an expansion, and I was going to ask the, the rationale for that. So, you said that they're going to be, so you're not, um, necessarily expanding to this building per se, you're saying you're going to build modulars?
So, what, um, this does is, it extends the office, um, we, right now, um, used some portion of our, uh, what used to be our cafeteria, and we moved some of the food and nutrition people, um, into, um, into that area. So, we've been slowly taking over every inch of this building, because, uh, there is not a lot of space. So, if the board walks the second floor, for example, or even the first floor, um, to the, to the offices, they'll see it's a labyrinth of, of, um, partitions, um, and people are having makeshift offices in what used to be a hallways before. So, we are pre-packed here, and the issue is that there isn't also room for spaces. So, I'll give you a great example. We had to kind of do a big, um, removal, so that we can meet with families that come here for international enrollment, and have a dedicated space where we can meet with meetings. Charmaine Youngwadi does a lot of our, um, suspensions to the superintendent, and we need a, a quiet, private space where the families can come. And so, we have a lot of sensitive, we have, we need, um, when our employees come with, um, some concerns or something, we need a, a space where, um, HR can have sensitive conversations, and we're just running out of space. So, what that buys us is a modular extension, um, doing anything to this building is going to cost us tens of millions of dollars, so we can't touch this building. But, um, usually, if you think about a modular, um, so for the school-based health center that we're going to put in Indian Head Elementary, that modular is about one point two million installed, it needs to have water, ours needs to have water as well for, for, um, for those reasons. So, if you think about it, it's kind of like, almost like two of those. Ours is going to be a little bit different, I haven't seen the sketches yet, but if you think every time we put in those kind of modulars, you're talking about one point one million dollars, I think it was, what was extended.
Do you know the timeline for some of this?
Um, I don't have that yet, because we're still working through the logistics of it. But having said this out loud, um, I'm going to get all kinds of questions from people in this building who are really comfortably close to their neighbor about the timeline. I don't have it yet, I didn't realize we were going to talk about this in public, because I haven't had a chance to let them know. But, yes, I will make sure that we have that timeline, and I'll let you know, and more importantly, I'll let the folks here know, especially the people in food and nutrition, who are very, very close to each other right now.
Too close.
Thank you.
Ms. Creamer?
Thank you so much. Thank you for, um, the explanation, I felt like it was really helpful to, to see the bullet, the numbered points. So, I did have a question about number eight, about the, the transportation reallocation. So, I understand we were over budget, right? Because we, um, took on some additional, um, buses, um, this year that were not planned for. So, um, is this because, um, we're trying to fill in some of that gap with this one point two million of what we were over budget, or under budget, rather? No, I guess we were over, sorry, it's been a long day. So, we were over our original budget, because we didn't originally approve last year and include monies for the allocation, or the, um, toward the allocation of the new buses that we took on this year. So, is this to kind of fill in this one point two million, some of that, that gap?
This is actually for, um, future routes that are coming in.
Oh, okay.
It takes so long to get a bus, that we can't wait until we need the bus, so we needed to be proactive in starting that process.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for explaining that, because that's why, I was wondering, I was like, well, were we under budget? I know we were under budget, but I'm like, to be, if we didn't allocate for that, my next question was going to be, well, what if we didn't have a surplus? And then we were over budget, then what would happen?
So, if we didn't have a surplus, um, and couldn't do it right now, then we would have to wait until the next fiscal year budget is approved and order in July?
Right, no, I understand now that it's for future. I didn't realize we were using it for future costs, but I was saying, if it was to, because I was understanding all these intercategorical changes are for the current school year, um, in the current budget, so if there were a situation where we essentially owed money back to a line item, per se, um, but we didn't have a surplus to take from, how do you typically deal with that?
So, in that case, you'd have to have fund, use fund balance.
Gotcha, okay, fund balance.
If you had all the money, you spent it all, and there was an immediate need, you'd have to use fund balance.
Okay, I recall, I recall that now, thank you for that. And my last question was, and this might be more for Dr. Navarro, but how do you prioritize, you know, select items off of, I guess, your, your little list there, um, you know, to, to, um, you know, I guess, throw in there when you have these, um, surpluses remaining?
Yeah, so, I think, uh, th, this is always a great conversation. I don't do this decision by myself, because I have biases and interests, and I have to acknowledge those. My team is my help, my leadership team, my chiefs. We have healthy arguments, where we argue for and against different things, uh, what are the greatest needs? And so, first and foremost is direct supports to kids. So, the World Language books and the US History books, as much as I was upset about how much they, they cost us more, there's no way kids are going to walk through the door, and we're not going to have it in front of them. There is, uh, there was a lot of conversation about whether or not we do anything to this building, because people are saying, I need this, and I need that, but I walked the food and nutrition offices, and I felt very close to every single one of those employees, and I need employees who feel like they can work in a space that just allows them to have space. And we were having some situations here where we were getting double, tripled book, and families were experiencing, you know, some customer care, some privacy, even staff privacy, and we need to just declutter a little bit this building. It's not going to, it's not going to declutter fully, unfortunately, I know it feels like three million's a lot of money. It'll declutter a lot of spa, a lot of offices, it'll definitely feel like there's more room. So, we just go through a healthy conversation of what should be prioritized, um, that investment into transportation because of our growth and our ability to order a year out. I mean, we are ordering buses a year out, the production was very much slowed through the pandemic, and so, you know, when contractors or us order out, it's really almost a year out. Um, and so, we could be proactive in many ways and have some flexibility, um, with our transportation options, being able to do those things. So, it really is a conversation, and, and the thing that I would say about my leadership team is that they advocate, even if it's not for their department. So, this is a prioritization of what we came up with.
Okay, thank you for that.
And, and some things, um, you know, you don't have a choice of doing, like, the, the fix, the healthcare, the, the two million dollars in the healthcare, which is, um, Ms. Smith?
Um, I think that was a great segue into my question, which was the healthcare claims, the two point one million dollar increase. Just curious, as we continue to emerge from the pandemic, do you believe this is our new norm? Like, is this something we should also prepare for in this upcoming budget that we're set to approve?
So, I don't really see it as something that is a result of the pandemic.
It's.
We have a lot of employees, and when a catastrophe, a medical catastrophe strikes them, since we're self-insured, you know, we, uh, we have a stopgap limit that we go up to, um, but those types of issues, um, a premature baby, um, you know, uh, cancer treatment, uh.
It only, it only takes a handful of employees to drive that number.
And when we look at it every year, we can, we don't know the people and who did, you know, who, but we look at what the, the medical, um, situations are, and they are conceivably one-time things that wouldn't necessarily happen the next year. So, it, it is the hardest thing for us to predict, because, number one, our healthcare claims are on a calendar year, and we're not, we're on a July through, you know, June, so that makes it even trickier. We do have, uh, Health Insurance Committee, and, you know, I, I've mentioned it here before, that I, you know, I think that we do continually look at, at ways, and Blue Cross Blue, we have Blue Cross Blue Shield constantly give us options to try to lower the costs moving forward, um, and I think that, you know, some of that, we need to, we're very conservative here on making changes to healthcare, um, because it's a very personal, thing for people, but, you know, as these costs keep rising, I think we have to start exploring some of those options that could save us some money.
Thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Number one, um, so if I'm reading this right, we're going to increase the allocations for paper? Copy it?
There was a lot of paper use this year.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm happy about that, I'm just, no, I, I know that's important, it might be, seem like a small thing, but it's very important. And, um, I wanted to know, because I've heard, uh, principals actually wanted, I spoke to, just, um, is it up to the school to, um, decide on how it's shipped to them, or is there certain, like, or do we ship the paper from here? How does that work? Because I know, I've heard that it was, it took some time for them to get paper sometimes, sometimes it's a lapse in them receiving the paper, and is that a part of the cost as well, or?
So, there, we have a print shop that's located here, so it'll, schools send print jobs over. It's printed here, and then it's sent out to the schools.
Oh, so this is for print jobs?
It's kind of all the same paper source.
Okay.
But yes, so every time there's a worksheet or something that needs to be printed at the school level, the jobs are sent over here, and they're printed, and then sent back out to the schools.
Oh, okay, so they, this is not about them getting their own paper to, oh, that's what I thought it was about, but that's, that's, okay, interesting, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we, uh, need to mo, we need to approve this tonight, so, make sure we entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
They have a Mr. Hancock and, I'll say Ms. Thomas. Uh, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Ms. Warren, seconded by Ms. Creamer. Uh, before I take a vote, uh, all your parents out there, graduation's coming up next week, and Project Graduation, please encourage your kids to go to that, please know where your kids are, and stay safe. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.